This meeting will now come to order. This is the special board meeting on Wednesday, April 8th. Monique, will you please call the roll? Randy Brockway?
Here.
Rachel Morello?
Here.
Rich Regan?
Present.
Michael O'Brien?
Here.
Juliette Boyd?
Present.
And, I'm sorry, Arthur Perry is absent. And Mary Rose Mandia?
Here.
All right. The first order of business, I would like to call for a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. David Bennapas consultant for the Riverside School District as presented in the contract in the board packet.
So moved.
Second. Juliette Boyd? Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion or questions? All the way. Juliette Boyd?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And the motion is passed. All right. Congratulations, Dr. Bennap.
Back to work.
Please pull out your old desk.
And not only are you back to work, but you're working immediately with a presentation to the board on a suggested timeline for the hiring of an interim superintendent.
Okay. I'm just going to speak from over here. You haven't needed the mic.
Well, reason we have the mic, it doesn't really amplify. It records for the TV.
Records. Would you prefer me to use the mic?
Or can we do that?
Just move it over to you.
For the TV.
Oh, that's true.
Well, there's either one of them.
Well, this way I can just kind of hold my stuff up here.
David, you could use that one.
Right here.
That one.
Oh, okay. Great. Good. Well, I, following our meeting on the 31st, I sent out a proposed timeline, assuming that we would do some listings for this interim superintendent position out of state. And, you know, I thought it was a good idea, and there were potentially some advantages to that. But as I contacted Wisconsin, Iowa, Indiana, and Michigan, and also just in looking at the Illinois Job Bank site, each of these states almost exclusively lists positions in-state and not out-of-state. And so, in the initial proposed timeline that I sent to you as a kind of a talking document, I had proposed moving the deadline back about three weeks to the end of the month to give enough time for the postings to get a little traction in those states. But I then, you know, over the weekend, and yesterday, and even today, followed up and did some work in looking at what those states had to offer and their processes and procedures and so forth, and found that it's really uncommon to have out-of-state postings. And so furthermore, given that, people aren't going to be going to those sites to look for out-of-state positions. They're pretty much exclusive to the states. So, given that, what I would propose is that we contact the Illinois Job Bank, which now has a deadline of April 10, and just amend that to say, or until filled. And so, you know, it leaves that deadline there, but can extend it and provide us with a little more time. And then, as I sent in that memo that you got in your packet on Monday, I will network in-state. So through the ROEs, the ISCs, some of the search firms that I'm aware of, some law firms, and through IASA, and just make sure that people are aware that this is posted, and that furthermore, if there might be an interest, that they would go online and fill out the application. And in checking with the district office today, as of 1:00, you had 19 applications, which is really pretty good for this kind of interim position. And I, of course, know people that have done this, and so I'm going to network and reach out to these various sources and see if we can generate a little bit more interest. But in the meantime, I'll look through those applications that we already have received, and I'll start working on those, and perhaps just do some initial screening, and we can, you know, move along with this process, and hopefully work to fill it perhaps by even the end of the month, provided that, you know, we can find a candidate that, or candidates that will fill the bill. As I indicated last week, the TRS limit of 100 hours for retirees might make it necessary to hire a team of people, so that this team would basically be able to work for the coming year to, you know, fulfill all the needs. And then we would have to work with them and work with you to kind of decide how the job duties might be split up. But I think, you know, that could certainly, certainly be done. And then in the meantime, too, as I do this networking, I'll get some information on what expectations are in terms of salary and/or any benefits. Generally, if retirees are hired, there won't be any cost to you for health coverage or that type of thing, so that can be fairly substantial saving. And I'll work with the board and with the law firm on contract specifics, and then we can decide together who from the board you would like to have involved in maybe some initial interviewing. And then when we get to the point of finalizing this, bringing in, you know, let's say, three people minimally, so that you feel you have some choice. And as I go through that process, too, I want to do some background checking, so that the people that we spend time trying to select are actually going to take the job, and also that they will check out in terms of their prior experience. The other thing in the Job Bank, I would indicate that the start date certainly will be July 1, but it could be earlier than that, so that there would be an opportunity for some transitioning with Dr. Sharmal Lewis and with Brian Gannon, and perhaps others, David Sellers, too, and other members of the administrative team.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any, does anybody have any questions? I guess my main question is, when you're going to start screening? What did, we said we're up to about 19 applications now?
We are, yes.
And...
So I have not looked at them as yet, but given your approval of my contract, I'm going to start on this tomorrow. And then as far as communication with the board, that I will keep you all informed. And I also wanted to indicate to Jeff and Sheri and Linda that I'll keep you posted and apprised of everything that I do as well. And this is just part of the transitioning process. I'm not moving the time schedule up to avoid you by any means, but primarily because there are other districts that are out looking for interim superintendents as well. And so, you know, we want to move as quickly as we can, so that we get a good candidate or good candidates. But I'll certainly work to keep you in the loop, as well as the board as a whole.
So, David, these applicants, they wouldn't necessarily have to be a retired superintendent.
No, they wouldn't. And that's a good point. There could be a seated superintendent now who might be looking for a transition, a change in position. And, you know, I think that this is a desirable place to work. Okay? And it was a great experience for me. And so, they might be willing to take the position as an interim for a year, full-time. In that case, you might probably have to pay a benefit, and, you know, all of that's somewhat negotiable. But with the understanding that, number one, you're an interim, and secondly, we're going to launch into a full search.
Actually, there was somebody in that category who has applied.
Okay. As I said, I haven't looked at any of them. Certainly in that instance, we would do a complete background check, but, you know, there are instances where individuals might want to move up, or maybe didn't have a good fit, and so, sure, that could certainly be a possibility.
David, this week are you going to be able to participate in the interviews?
Can't quite hear you, Juliette.
I'm sorry. This week are you going to be able to participate in the interviews regarding?
Yes. I'm planning on spending the day here on Friday.
Wonderful.
And I think as it indicates in my contract, my role in that case will be to just kind of assist the team that's in place now. And if I can help with background checks or anything else, I certainly will do that. My number-one focus is going to be working on this interim position for the superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, I think another possibility within my contract, or something that we had talked about, and this would be secondary but important, that I would be certainly willing to work with you and new board members on just an orientation, and we can talk about how that might occur, too.
Yeah. We can, yeah, we can talk about that. We can talk about that. I guess we're...
Maybe I can put together like a little memo with some suggestions on that, and at least it'd be another talking document, if you would.
Okay. We can talk about that at another board meeting?
Sure.
Or at the next board meeting?
Well, you're, maybe on the 21st?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Then we won't be pressing you back into the meeting. But, you know, conceivably, you know, we could meet in late April to appoint an interim person or team, because part of your direction was ASAP. So I remembered that.
So, David, you'll start looking at these 19?
I'll do that tomorrow. Start on that tomorrow.
Yeah. And if, for some reason, it's quickly, you know, reduces down to four or five or something?
Sure.
I would ask you to let us know if you have any concerns with that number.
Okay.
Because I do see that you've got this Education Week mentioned here, and that's a publication I'm familiar with.
Okay.
My wife was a writer for, and she received that weekly. And I do remember the back pages.
Back pages.
Being full of superintendent, interim superintendent searches from all over the U.S. And the beauty of that might be is that perhaps somebody is maybe retiring from New York and has family in Chicago, and would like to move here for a year. I mean, that opens that...
So I think when you get to the point of looking for a full-time superintendent, that's going to cost to run something in that paper for 30 days is about $700 minimally. And then they also have an online portion to that. But for people that are out really searching for positions, that's one of the premier...
Yeah, it is.
...points to go and look at.
Yes.
Okay. Any other, any other questions?
When are we going to discuss who's going to be sitting on the committee? Should we discuss it like the May 5 meeting, the reorganization meeting?
I guess. If you, even the committee to interview?
The committee to, yeah, the interview committee.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do it?
Well, no, I think we should, we might even want to talk about that right now.
All right. Why don't we talk about that now?
I mean, if there are two of you that would like to sit down and work with me on perhaps some initial interviews, or screening, that might kind of expedite it a little bit. And, you know, in that process, this would be pre-meeting with three, four candidates that would be presented to the board as a whole.
I'm available to, you know, to do some screening, and there is one person who called me, you know, who directed it to me, and I did call and chat with her, so I'd like to at least convey that conversation.
Okay. Well, let me just say this. If you're interested in doing that, why don't you let Mary Rose know, and then I'll coordinate that through her.
And, yeah, and you're going to start immediately with the screening?
Well, I'm going to look at all the applications tomorrow, and also tomorrow, I'm going to start networking. Done a little bit of that already, but in earnest.
All right. Can we, can we start talking about, you know, an interviewing committee, or is it too premature because we haven't screened? What do you think?
Well, no, I would be happy to talk about that right now. I mean, if there, if you want to do that, if there are two others by just agreement...
As I said, who would like...
I'd like to be a part of it.
Like to volunteer for that?
I'd volunteer as well.
All right. And then if we're going to...
Is that all right with everyone else, if Rich and Randy, if I work with Rich and Randy?
Are we now allowed to work with members-elect on the school board, or is this...
I was just wondering that, too. How that works.
I would work, I think the actual appointment is going to take place by this board, because I would like to move on it...
Wow.
...prior to, you know, the organizational meeting, in order to select the best available candidates. But, Michael, in that process, all of you, as well as Jeff and Sheri and Linda, will be kept appraised. Now, I think when it gets down to the point of actually interviewing, and what I've done in the past in some of these transitional situations, we've allowed elected board members to come and sit in in the closed session of the interviews, of the final interviews. And so, I think I would extend that to you, so that everybody's in the loop and everybody's in agreement as to the direction that we're going.
But according to your timeline, the interviews are not going to happen until May 7, 8, and 9, or you're talking about even earlier?
Oh, no, no.
April 30.
April 30.
My second memo...
Ah, it's been...
Kind of disqualified that first timeline.
I will pretend I didn't see this, then. Okay. All right.
So, it's the second memo, I wrote the first memo thinking that we would be posting it out-of-state.
Got it.
But since that really isn't viable, and it's not going to be productive, then we don't need to change the timeline. All we need to do on the Job Bank thing is say, or until filled.
Got it.
So that does extend it if somebody turns in an application after your posted deadline.
Right. Okay.
And I could work with Bobna to do that.
Change the posting.
And all of this stuff, I'm going to coordinate with Bobna, too. So we'll keep you and the appropriate staff in the loop on this.
Okay. So we're, so two people, that would be Randy and Rich?
Rich and Rich.
Will be on the interviewing team?
Well, we'll do, they'll be on, we're going to call it the screening team.
Okay.
Okay? Because all of you are going to be in that final interview team.
Okay.
Okay?
So the first...
Once we screen it down in three or four viable either teams or individuals that we feel would be worth their time and yours, then we'll set that up, and try to do that by the end of April.
All right. Now, if a third member, if I would like to join this team, then all of a sudden...
That won't work.
Because of the OMA.
Right. I don't want to give Mr. Skolnick any more material.
Even if he makes up the material?
[laughter]
That's what creative writing is all about, right, Bob?
I have my lawyer, and you have your lawyer.
Yours just graduated, though.
Yeah.
Right? Seconds ago. Yeah.
All right.
All right. So, okay, so we've got our, we've got the way we're going.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. The word's for me.
I understand, I did have a conversation with Dennis Kelly, that he's going to participate in this process. You said, as far as screening, as far as checking references, what will his role be as you understand it?
Well, as I network, and as I need individuals to assist me in screening, then I'll contact people like Dennis and others to help me.
Okay.
And I've talked with Dennis. He and I worked together for 14 years through LANSI, and we have a good working relationship.
Okay. Yeah, I would say to add that based upon my conversation with him, he might be a good person to have more, a more active role in, to help us. I mean, I think, you know, it's great to have one brain. I always think that having more than one brain involved is good in every situation, so that we may want to talk, you know, if it's okay, we can talk to him directly and include him in a more active role.
Well, and I'm going to coordinate this, okay? So if anything is going to happen, please let me know, so that I don't get surprised. And by same token, I'm not going to surprise any of you.
That's fair.
And you are under contract.
Yes.
You are under contract.
I'm going to sign it before we leave.
David, that was $25 an hour, is that right?
No, we're still negotiating.
It was 50, and it's the same rate that I got in...
It's a good rate, yeah.
...in River Forest 10 years ago.
It's very fair.
As well as RV prior to that, so it hasn't inflated.
Yeah, I know.
It probably should.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
All right. And my next agenda item is just, again, an informational item, just kind of clarifying something that David just alluded to, which is the district office chain of command. A board delegates to its superintendent, and Bobna is our superintendent, and David has just asked that, you know, that any work he does for the board, he will coordinate with the superintendent or the interim superintendent as we move forward, given that he's a consultant and he has no administrative authority. So I did want to mention that and clarify that. I know, are there any questions on that? Although you are reporting directly to us in the superintendent, any kind of interim...
Right, exactly. But I'm a consultant, and I'm not an administrator, and certainly will work with the administrative staff here and with the board. I work through the board president, and, you know, in my conversation with Dennis, he reiterated that same kind of process, too. And that way, it's just easier, but I also firmly believe that everybody on the board gets the same information and the same treatment. So there aren't going to be any deals.
That's all we want.
We're in this together, and we're going to make it work.
And, and just like when we talk about you don't have an administrative role, you're a consultant, in order to use the resources of the district staff, you coordinate that with...
Right.
With the senior staff?
Well, I also said to Mary Rose, I do have a tendency to kind of take over, and so I asked her to make sure that I stay within the bounds of my contracted role, and I will do my best to do so. Every once in a while, my wife has to remind me of this, but it's worked so far.
How long have you been married, David?
Well, you know, I was in church a few years back, and this guy stood up, and he said, "I've been married for, my 40th wedding anniversary is coming up." 21 years to the first wife.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
19 to the other.
Okay. Well, anyway, it's worked a long time.
It has.
All righty. And anyway, just like to again reiterate the future meeting dates, April 21, and for the regular business meeting, and again, May 5 for the biennial reorganization meeting in the, right here, in the Housers Resource Center. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to enter into the club.
Mary Rose, let me, let's think maybe about reserving the date of the 28th of April as possibly a date when we might finalize this interim position.
And then by that, what do you mean? When we're all going to be together to interview the final candidate?
Yeah, we would just maybe do a kind of a final interview. Think about that. It just, and that was kind of my purpose on Monday of sending that first thing out, so that we just kind of had in mind what a timeline would be, and that people would reserve dates.
All right. So... So...
So just maybe keep that in mind, and that's something, perhaps, that I'll shoot for, too.
All right. And then, and then just let me know what day you would expect us to take action, you know, in terms of the role.
Right, right.
Okay. So how that all figures.
All right. Very good.
All righty. Again, I'd like a motion to enter into the closed session, a closed session, for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony out of complaint lodges against an employee, to determine its validity, and also collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees, or the representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. One either. Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Juliet Boyd?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.